Victoria. You have started streaming.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. This is our regularly scheduled committee of the whole for Monday, January the 18th, 2021. If you were watching at home, welcome. This is, of course, being both livestreamed and available for archives for future viewing. As we call this meeting to order, I'd just like to acknowledge that the lands on which we gather are the traditional territories of the Coast and Strait Salish people. Specifically, we recognize the Lakewangas-speaking people known today as the Songhais and the Esquimalt First Nations, and their historic connection to these lands continue to this day. Up first, just approval of the agenda. Moved and seconded, thank you. Any corrections, changes? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Not opposed, thank you. Item 3.1, committee of the whole minutes from December 14th and December 17th in the special. Moved and seconded, thank you. Are there any corrections, additions, changes to those minutes? Don't see any hands up, so I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Not opposed, thank you very much. We have, next up, mayor and council verbal reports. I don't have much to report on the CRD front. We're just starting the budgetary process, and all of the committees are breaking out and having their meetings. So probably the one thing of interest is that we have finalized, for all intents and purposes, the structure to allow First Nations to sit as part of our committees. And so that's an interesting model where there can be up to nine sitting on committees, and some of the in-camera pieces and stuff took a bit of trickiness to work out how we can manage that, particularly for land use pieces. But it's all been resolved and should be seeing that happening. So we'll see how that goes this year, but pretty exciting changes to what's happening there on that table. But that's pretty much the extent of my update on the CRD front. Counselor Green.
Mayor, I just have a question. For those of us that have new CRD committees, will there be a notice of the scheduling for meetings, or do they do that directly from the CRD? I, for instance, have a new committee from the CRD, so I'm not sure when the meetings are happening.
So notification does happen from the CRD for those committees, yes. Are there any other updates from members of council, any other committees, boards that you sit on? It is early in January after all, so not surprising. Thank you very much. Move on then to the non-land use bylaw section. These sections, and most of the following sections, are subject to public input. If the public wishes to speak to us on these agenda items, it's worth calling in. The phone number, meeting ID number and password are all located on the agenda, so you can view that either at the civic web portal or on our municipal website. It should also be viewable on the screen if you're watching the livestream from home. So first up on the agenda, we have the Heritage Commission establishing bylaw. Just to note, I think all council members are aware, there's been a couple of additional communications pieces that were added to this that came in today. There's a recommendation here that reflects the discussion that we had at the special committee of the whole last month. And I'll turn over to who's, Ms. Williams, are you speaking to this, or is there any of staff members that wish to do the introduction?
The deputy director can provide the introduction, and she's online.
Okay, Ms. Morden, welcome.
Thank you, your worship. I'll just do a quick audio check that you can hear me.
We can hear you loud and clear, thank you.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So the purpose of the report is to bring forward an updated version of the Heritage Commission bylaw for council's consideration. The staff report is just basically a brief background of where we've been in the last couple of months. There is a copy of the facilitator's summary notes from the planning session on December 17th, so that's from Ms. Winter. Within the staff report itself, we just picked up on the seven key matters agreed to at the conclusion of that workshop by council, and I've just provided a bit of commentary in terms of how each item either has or will be addressed by staff. So we're hopeful that the updated draft bylaw is an improvement in terms of council's expectations and goals, meeting those, just a tighter alignment there. So we are recommending that the bylaw be referred to council for consideration of first three readings, possibly with minor amendments, pardon me, if needed. But if there's more major changes, of course, we're always happy to take that direction. And so with that, happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Since the changes that came out of the discussion at the committee of the whole, I'll just take again any questions from council or comments on any of the changes that have been made to move this forward, and then we'll get to a motion, as anybody can make a motion anytime on this as they see fit. We'll try and do questions, if there's meaningful questions first. Go ahead, Counselor Zelka.
Thank you so much, Chair. Relating to some of the comments that came through on the correspondence and relating to transparency, there was a suggestion that since there'll be fewer opportunities for this to be before the public, it seems, in terms of it being talked about, one of the suggestions was to try and post some indication that this development proposal, if it has a heritage aspect, that it somehow gets to the website somehow earlier. So it sounds like it would be a candidate for this thing referred to as the development tracker. So this leads me to ask about the development tracker. Is there any indication of when that might go live, and could it go live with the changes to the Heritage Commission bylaw?
Ms. Varela, do we have a timeline?
Your worship, I believe council needs to approve that and the budget process going forward. So we'll be asking for $16,600 for implementation of that tracker, plus the staff time on top of that. So you'll see that implemented in 2021.
Thank you. If you'll indulge me, just for the value of the public sitting at home, I had this discussion today on the issue, and I won't list it here. I can't think I'll find it up. Give me two seconds to see if I might be able to find my response. But I thought there was a really important piece of... So one of the things that we're talking about here is this particular establishing bylaw for this committee, and the issue of when people in public can see things is a really important part of that. And I just want those people watching at home to understand how critical that is as part of the overall process. So there's all kinds of aspects. There's aspects of significant projects going to an early public input portion so that the applicant can get public feedback before they get too far down the path, trying to consolidate things into a public hearing so we have a chance for the all public to be notified and have access, improving the way that we're putting the information up on the website, the timing of that, making sure that all the committees and commissions have all the relevant information, but that also means it's made available to the public, the council, and to the committees and commissions at the same time. And fundamental to that, I just thought, I wrote this down today, and I was kind of a bit surprised when I sort of actually wrote it down, how many things have been done in the last two years as a whole, because this is sort of the final, one of the final pieces of the whole administrative pieces to make this all work together. There is the council procedure bylaw, which is a critical part of this, obviously, the public correspondence guidelines, the agenda publication guidelines, advisory body agenda publication guidelines, public hearing guidelines, minutes guidelines, committee and committee policy, and other foundational documents that have been worked on. And they all work together as a whole to provide that transparency and that consistency. And so that's really an important question. I thought that came from that correspondence. How are we managing that? And it's one piece of the overall of this. But I think it's really important to know that when information is completed at the staff level, it comes to the committees and commissions. At that point, it's a public document, and all that information is shared so the public, the committees, and the council can all see that at the same time. So there we go. Having written it out today, I thought I'd share that with you, because it was great. It's easy to forget all the things that have gone on in the time here. So sorry, Counselors, okay, I jumped in on your question.
I very much appreciate you doing that, because it actually fleshed it out in terms of transparency. So I very much appreciate that, and thank you for the answer from staff. I look forward to 2021, and not only this going live for heritage, but also for all the other aspects that the public, I'm sure, is very eager to see in terms of what's happening with the fabric of our community. The other question I have, I'll have to get this down here, is one of the areas that it has seemed to me, one of the areas that has been a bit, how do I say, sometimes has had a process unto itself, has to do with demolition permits around houses that are identified on a heritage list, whether it's the Stark List, or Stuart Stark List, or a house that is already either registered or designated. And that seems to have a process that's independent of this heritage commission. And I'm wondering, through you, to staff, will this process in some ways help with that workflow? I would love to understand about how that workflow works, and if they'll be changed as a result of this. Thank you.
You're specifically referring to the 60-day protection order process?
Well, and input from the Heritage Commission to that process, which has seemed to my estimation has been lacking in the past.
Okay. I'm not sure, do we have Ms. Jensen or Mr. Anderson, Mr. Anderson on the line to talk to that about what the process is when an identified property comes forward for demolition?
Yes, your worship. Can everybody hear me?
We can. If you could speak slightly louder, that would probably be beneficial.
I will do that. Yes, so the process, as we've been through recently, when we have an application for a demolition permit, and the property has been identified as having heritage value, whether that's being on a community heritage register or being designated by bylaw, that requires a review by staff and then consideration of withholding that permit and bringing that forward to council. Council then can be considering whether or not to place a temporary protection order on that property, and that is to allow for a process for consideration of the heritage matter. And it can be referred by council to the Heritage Commission as part of that review process, that 60-day period. So that's the process that can unfold when we see a demolition permit application for a property that has identified heritage value.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Go ahead, Counselor Zelka.
Thank you, Chair. So just to confirm, council has to refer each time if we would like input from the Heritage Commission, or I just want to confirm it doesn't go there as a matter of course, like some of our other permits and application permits move in terms of the workflow.
Sure, thank you. I think because it has to come to council, whether or not to put a 60-day protection order, that would be the point for referral. But, Mr. Anderson, can you confirm that? Is there even an option to automatically refer to the Heritage Commission at the same time?
Your worship, no, there isn't. Basically, council has to consider whether or not to place the temporary protection order on or not. And if it does not, then it just simply reverts back to staff to review the demolition permit and issue that. If council does place the order, then a process, depending on what council directs that process to be, it can be referred to the Heritage Commission at that time.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Zelka.
Thank you so much. And I'll try not to beat this horse too dead. I'll just try and beat it only once. Terrible expression, but I'll do the best I can. So for us to do the 60-day protection order, don't we normally need something like a statement of significance, and we need to have some indication of the value of what we're trying to do? Or is the 60-day protection order, the intention of that is to get the statement of significance and all the other heritage aspects so that we can then follow through with it? I just wanted to have an understanding of cart before horse, speaking of dead horses.
Sure, thank you. All the worst expressions are like that. Kill two birds with one stone, skin a cat. They're all horrible expressions somehow entered into our language. Mr. Anderson, on this one, these are just identified heritage properties, correct?
Yes, so if I may, the property can be identified as having heritage value, and that alone can bring it forward to council for consideration of a temporary protection order if we have a demolition permit. If it's on the heritage register, it will have a statement of significance already prepared for it. But with respect to the properties not on the register, there may be an interest to look at in more detail defining the heritage value. That can be done through a statement of significance.
Counselor Zelka?
Thank you. The last question is, who would create the statement of significance, and does the Heritage Commission have any input on that process? Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Anderson, under the new establishing bylaw, perhaps you can explain how that works?
Certainly. Just in talking in general about statements of significance and their preparation, those would be researched and drafted by staff and then taken to the Heritage Commission for review and input. And then with that, a recommendation can be asked of the commission to support the statement of significance.
Thank you. That is actually in the current, the establishing bylaw as it stands. Yeah, thank you. Counselor Green?
Just a supplementary question to follow up Counselor Zelka's question to Mr. Anderson through you. Mr. Anderson, how is it determined that a house is neither on the register or designated, has heritage value? How would we know that? How is that confirmed at the time a demolition application is brought forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, through your worship, Counselor Green. If the property is on the register, of course, the value's been determined as part of that process. If we have a property that we consider may have heritage value, there's likely to be some documentation or evidence provided around that property that is available for us to make that consideration. But apart from that, we wouldn't go about conducting research to determine if there was heritage value if there wasn't anything available for us at the time of receiving a demolition permit?
Go ahead, Counselor Green.
Would it be possible through you, Mayor, to Mr. Anderson, if that was the case, and no one was able to determine from staff's perspective or from the office or municipality that there was heritage value, would it be appropriate to inquire of the Heritage Commission, many of whom have quite a long history with the community and are aware? Sometimes there is only anecdotal evidence or social history and may not be notated anywhere, may not be in writing. Is it possible to canvass the commission in cases where there is some question?
Mr. Anderson?
Your worship, I guess it's possible. It's a pretty rare situation where we have a property that has heritage value that's not on the register or not in our inventory or documentation. But I guess what we'd have to have is some evidence that there is some heritage elements at all with respect to the property before we would go through the process of sort of seeking further input from, for example, the commission. I think that's a pretty unique scenario, but that's just my thought.
It is, I think, one of the possibilities that's been raised over the time of the Heritage Commission is the idea of tasking some more research to see if, I think they have a sort of a lost souls list and a few other terms, where there are houses that have stories that should be captured and aren't, and would like the chance to kind of undertake that, and that might be something that would be undertaken by them as part of their annual work plan, for example, to come in, and we could provide some funding and support for that. But I don't know that as an ad hoc. But that would be, I think, the way that council would support that process, to expand that list. That's my take. Anyway, Counselor Green?
Thank you. And also an informal canvassing. I'm not talking about a great, long, detailed undertaking. It would be just, perhaps just an informal call to the chair of the commission to say, are you aware of any history that we should be aware of on this particular property? And I agree that that doesn't probably often happen, but it can, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Counselor Braithwaite?
Thank you. And through you, Chair, I'm just going back to something that some Counselors Zelka brought up about the development tracker, and hearing staff say that that's probably not going to be in place until after budget of 2021 is approved. And looking at the pieces of correspondence that we received, I'm wondering if it would be prudent of us to, in the trying to find the transparency and the good government, if we did make that modest change that was recommended in one of those pieces of correspondence about making sure that things are posted in a timely fashion on the district website for public information. And I'm just wondering if that might be something that we should put in there for now.
Maybe, I'm not sure who I asked that question of. Ms. Varela?
I'm not sure if I caught the question in its entirety, your worship. But with the development tracker, we are prioritizing implementation of the payroll system prior, so I don't have a clear quarter when that actually is going to be in place. So I wouldn't be comfortable committing to that tonight. Did that answer Counselor Braithwaite's question, or was there another piece?
No, actually, no. That was my point, was that since the development tracker will not be in place, then should we not then look at perhaps making what is proposed as a modest change in one of the pieces of correspondence suggesting that applications be posted in a timely manner on the district website for public information, just to make that small change to the bylaw that's in front of us?
I'm not sure.
Your worship, it's Sarah Morden. I could speak to that if you'd like.
Go ahead, Ms. Morden.
I just wanted to mention that, in fact, that some of those timelines and being more transparent with applications that are coming forward in terms of when they appear on committee and commission agendas, that is addressed, at least partially, through the committee and commission policy, which ties the agenda timelines more to what council is used to. So those packages are going to be put out according to timelines that council and committee of the whole meetings are, which I think will improve the transparency in and of itself, and making sure that they're consistently posted to the website according to those timelines. So I think that that would help. I'm not sure, and Ms. Williams may be able to speak to this more, but I'm not sure I would put that in a bylaw as much as have it continue to reside in that policy.
Counselor Braithwaite, does that...
I think there's a couple of aspects of this, because there's, I saw that piece of correspondence, and the ask of that was, can you not post these things when the applications come in to post it? That's a different... So the things that come to council do not get posted to, will not be posted to that, right? Because those are going to a staff for back and forth for determining the application. And once that package is complete, if the applicant wants to bring it forward, then it comes forward, and that's when it goes to the commission. At that point, it becomes a public document. And so there's that aspect. Everything else are just building permit-type pieces that are more procedural, and that's where the development tracker tool is the most valuable, because that's real time what's happening on different things. If there's demolition permits or building permits being applied, you know, being approved. I think that there might be a little differentiation there between the two processes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Before I go back to Counselors Zelka for questions, any other questions? Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. And just following up on Counselor Braithwaite's comments, I am wondering if it is possible until a development tracker comes online that staff could perhaps work more closely with particularly the chair of the Heritage Commission, so that if there were applications for dwellings of a certain age, because, you know, we're not talking about every, but a certain period of time, that are not on the register, not designated, that are less clear, that if that, we could just strengthen those lines of communication in the interim, so that the chair of the commission then would have the opportunity to consider in advance of just the permit for demolition being issued, and would have the ability to comment to staff about perhaps knowledge that they have on the value of that property to the community. And then staff could take that directive in consideration and may direct it then to come back to council for further referral, just in the interim period until the development tracker comes on. I don't know. I'd just throw it out for consideration.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Patterson. I'll ask staff on that question, but I just want to make sure. There is actually a process currently where anything that has any demolition permit gets circulated to the members of the Heritage Commission and council, just for that purpose. Is that, are you thinking of something over and above that current practice?
Well, I think certainly if anything that was listed on the register or as designated definitely got flagged. And I just will use the example of the one on Island Road where it wasn't registered, it wasn't designated. And so it was, you know, it went out kind of a bit later in the process than perhaps would have been ideal, and there would have been a chance to redirect it back to council, perhaps, before. The process was just a little flawed. Pardon me, I think that, you know, just strengthening the communication would have allowed for a better process there.
Okay. Ms. Varela, did you have anything else to add to that?
I was just wondering if Mr. Anderson wanted to speak to the process that we currently have in place.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, your worship. I think you made the point that we do notify and circulate when we receive demolition permit applications, and we do identify when those are on the heritage property. But more to the point, if there's a property that the chair, for example, of the commission sees that may have some interest, that would be a great opportunity for them to contact staff and have a discussion regarding that. But I think we have a process where notice is given when we have demolition permit, and we also do identify the status of the property in terms of heritage register. So I'm not sure the tracker will do anything more in terms of that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, I'll go back to Counselor Zelka.
Thank you so much. So the Island Road property, thank you, Counselor Patterson, is an excellent example of a property that had, in my opinion, heritage value, and yet wasn't on any particular list. And thankfully, it started a process in the heritage world that revealed that heritage value. And even though the process changed, at least that raised the awareness, which led to the 60-day protection order and the whole various processes that led to that. So if they hadn't applied for a heritage permit, would that property have slipped through the cracks? And that's the process that I'm hoping we can tighten up in terms of those houses that have heritage value. At least it was on the Stark List, but it wasn't designated and it wasn't registered. So I heard staff say that only if it's registered and designated will it be brought to council for 60 days, but not if it's...
No.
No? That's what I heard staff say.
Yes, we have an interjection, an objection from the floor.
Excellent. First question is related to the interjection, thank you.
Yeah, no, I was gonna, I was gonna say, I don't think that's quite correct. Mr. Anderson, can you explain again, maybe using Island Road as an example about how, if there hadn't been an HRA process before that, if this had just come forward as a demolition, what that process would have looked like?
Maybe if I can. I apologize for interjecting this remote thing. But I had stated that if there's documentation on a property, such as an inventory that we have in the Stark List, then we would look at that. Staff would look at that when we received a demolition permit. So it wouldn't be necessarily missed in the process. I just wanted to make that point. So when we received that demolition permit application, I mean, the property that's been noted, it was known to be in the inventory and have heritage value. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Go ahead, Counselor Zelka.
Thank you. And another follow-up related to comments from Counselor Braithwaite. Again, trying to drill down a bit for more on transparency. In the past, when things were maybe, my expression, loosey-goosey with respect to our committees and commissions, it seemed to me that we weren't quite so robust on the way we would post our minutes or our application documents. Essentially, it appeared in the past that these reports and the agendas would be sent directly to the committee members, and they wouldn't quite make it to the website. Or there might just be the agenda on the website. quite make it to the website. Or there might just be the agenda on the website and nothing else. And, and all the reports supporting the agenda wouldn't necessarily be there. That's, that's the past. I'm assuming that we're now going to be treating committees and commissions exactly the same way we treat council and committee as a whole, where everything will be available on the website, including all of the reports, supporting everything on those, on those agendas for the committees and commissions. So the question is, is that, is that true, yes or not?
Thank you. And Counselor Elka's speaking through me is, is appropriate, and in behind him, I can see staff nodding, so I'll go to Ms. Williams on that.
Thank you, Your Worship. And yes, Counselor Elka is correct. All committees and commissions will follow the same rules and procedures as council and committee as a whole. All documents will be posted to the website. If there is a late item that arrives at the meeting that was not on the published agenda, that will be appended to the agenda afterwards. We're also striving to get our minutes up within a 48 to 72-hour window after the meeting on the website, which would then advance out to the public, the decisions that have been made.
Or the recommendations that have been made, at least at the, at the committee level. It was like used terminology. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Go ahead, Counselor Elka.
A last piece I'll share on this. I'm, I'm very happy to hear that. If, if at least all of the source documents are, are posted at the time of the committees and the commissions, I think that will go a long way to, to helping with some of the transparency, at least initially, until the development tracker provides even further levels of, of drill down available to our citizens as they want to see proposals, as they actually are, are, are applied for. And I presume that at the time of applying, that that's when the members of the public have to sign the, the piece of paper saying that their proposal, their, their building permit, their application is, is now in the public domain, and that certain information is now available to the public.
I'm going to leave that one, because it's a totally different thing than we're talking about here today, but we'll have that question as we get to it, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Elka. Are there any other questions? Go ahead, Counselor Patterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And through you to staff, I just want to clarify, there was a comment from the Oak Bay Heritage Commission that, for the advice that comes to council, that any resolution by the Heritage Commission that might be predicated by considerations, limitate, limiting factors, anything that would help to clarify the decision of the Heritage Commission either in favor or against something being done, that that will be captured concisely in the, in the minutes that come to council, so that council is, is, is aware of that. And then based on whatever decision or discussion takes place at council, that that information will then get back through the council liaison to the Heritage Commission. Is, is that, is that correct? That is what the intent is for the future and how, how we will see the documents?
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. I'm gonna, Ms. Williams, I'm gonna go to you on this one. There is a committees and commissions minutes policy, which helps guide some of those pieces. And I think it's always, it'll be part of the orientation for the, for the committees and commissions, I'm sure. But perhaps you can give an overview of the structure of those minutes. You've already touched on the timeframes as well, which is also a critical factor of this.
Yes. So further to Counselor Patterson's question, yes, the committees and, and commissions of councils' minutes will be anecdotal in nature. So councils' minutes are action-oriented, and they, and they record the decisions made by council. But minutes coming forward from your select committees or commissions will include a summary of the items that were discussed and considered in making that decision. It, it won't specifically identify individuals who voted for and against, and their particular reasons, but it will certainly talk to what the body spoke about and what the body considered.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I just, for my clarification, I, I guess, Mayor, actually, I'll, I'll leave mine, any more comments and questions, anyway. This is an opportunity for the public, if they wish to, to speak to us on this item, are welcome to do so. Granted, we are still in pandemic, so we still have remote access. Again, the number's at the bottom of your screen, if you're watching the live stream, but it's also available on the agenda package itself as well. Ms. Williams, has anybody called in to speak to this item?
Not at this time, Your Worship.
All right, thank you. I'm not too surprised, given this is a meeting number, I think 17 or something, we've had, to try and refine this down. Okay, so back to this table then for, for discussion. Further questions or comments are welcome at this time. I guess like, questions I should have had in general for the committee, that I, as I read through the, the bylaw, the wording around the up to two members may serve as appointed directors on the Oak Bay Heritage Foundation, and that model is sort of clarifying the, the separation through that process. It seems to me we can either go one way or the other, whether we keep them largely separated or, or entirely together to, to manage that. So this seemed like the result of the conversation that we had, just want to make sure people are comfortable with that. The appointed first staggered of two in three calendar years is the other change that's in here, just want to make sure people are good with that. And I just wanted to comment in here, to actually, in the bylaw itself, adding that council shall establish the annual budget and provide funds for the operation of the commission, I thought was just excellent, because I think it's lacked in previous years where we set out what they can do, but we've never actually said that we would officially fund them in that way. So I just want to express my appreciation for including, first after, include that, based on the conversations that happened at this table. So thank you. Are there other comments or discussion on this? Go ahead, Counselor Green.
I just wanted to make sure, and I, I wanted to thank the, the people who did write in to us with comments and suggestions, and I just wanted to ensure that their concerns have been either considered or captured in our discussion. I think that's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Any other discussion? And just, we can have a motion to speak to, the motion, if that's probably the simplest thing.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Moving seconded, thank you very much. Any further discussion on that recommendation? I'm not seeing any. All those in favor? Any opposed? Not opposed. Thank you very much. And, and again, I'll just, as already stated, thanks to staff for all their work, but also thanks to council. This has been a, a lot of iterative process to try and find a model that will work for Oak Bay and, and captures the concerns. And, and, yeah, it really came home to me as I went through all the other documents that, that control those other aspects of the transparency and the communication. What a big piece of work this is, that this is one, one piece of the puzzle to achieve those, those goals. Item number 6.1, traffic control orders. Counselor Patterson wishes to recuse herself on item 2020-08, which is to stop sign on Woodlawn Court. Woodlawn, oh, sorry. Woodline Crescent. Counselor Patterson, if you can just state for the record the reason for your recusal?
I will recuse myself from the debate and decision on that, simply because I'm a resident on Woodlawn, and so I will just not take part in that discussion and let my fellow counselors make that decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So if I could ask a limitation here, that people, we limit our discussion to all items on this other than Woodlawn. And then we'll ask, I'll have Counselor Patterson leave the room, and we'll consider Woodlawn as a separate item. So are there any questions from staff on any of these? Go ahead, Counselor Braithwaite.
Yes, and through you, Chair, I'm just wondering what prompted the two-hour parking on the, on the bottom of Oak Bay Avenue at Fall Bay? If we could just get an update on that?
Sure, thank you. I'm not sure, is Mr. Reynolds or Mr. Renick? Sorry, Mr. Renick? Flip back.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Is my volume okay?
It is great, thank you.
Through you, Mayor, to committee, the reason for that particular two-hour parking is just that that was one stretch of Oak Bay Avenue that did not have two-hour parking to begin with. It's important for the businesses in the area to allow parking turnover, but that was about one block of Oak Bay Avenue that did not have signage at this point in time. So hence the recommendation.
Is that good?
Yeah, thank you. And then just a, a comment. I know that there was recently a traffic change on King George Harrison Beach Drive, I believe. And I, I know that that took some people by surprise. And I'm wondering what we do to indicate to residents that there has been a change to a traffic signal, just to kind of give them a heads up in case they're not paying as much attention as perhaps they should be.
Mr. Renick, I remember, yeah, Mr. Renick, what is the notification process?
Through you, Mayor, to committee of the whole, there's generally not much notification given. You would typically see new tabs on signs on busier roads, but we generally find that traffic volumes are low enough that drivers are able to see the signs and respond to them. We did use a stop sign ahead sign on Beach Drive to warn people of the new stop sign, but for these other installations, I don't believe that that's warranted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson, or Counselor Braithwaite. I'm just having a hard time with names tonight. Did I see another hand? Not seeing any of your things. So again, this is open to the public, I believe, yeah, it is available for the public to comment on. If anybody wishes to call in, the phone number is at the bottom of the screen or on the agenda. Again, available on the website or at the Civic Web Portal, where we post the full agenda packages and information. So we'll just give it a moment if anybody wishes to call in and have any comments. I would ask that you restrict yourself to not Woodlawn, to make your comments until, until after we get to that, that agenda item. Ms. Williams, is anybody, are our phone lines lighting up here for the, for the issue of stop signs?
No callers at this time, Your Worship.
Okay, so with that, we'll come back from the questions to comments and, and a motion. Go ahead, Counselor Braithwaite.
I will make the recommendation of all of the traffic control orders except for 2020-08.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Moving seconded. Is there any further discussion on this item? Not seeing any. All those in favor? Any opposed? Not opposed? Thank you, Counselor Patterson. We'll wait till you leave the room before we consider the next agenda item. If anybody wishes to call in on agenda, on the item of the stop sign on Woodlawn Crescent, you can call into the number on your screen or on the agenda, also posted on the Civic Web Portal. This is the time for public to call in on this one item. So back to this table now that Counselor Patterson has left. Are there any questions related to Woodlawn? Go ahead, Counselor Elka.
Thank you so much, Chair. Through you to staff, if I may, Woodlawn is a very small street, and we have lots of other small streets that, some of them don't have stop signs. What's so special about this small street, since there's so, so few number of people that live there? Is the first part of the question, and I'll just ask the second part. What are the drivers expected to do for those small streets that, that today don't have a stop sign?
Thank you, Counselor Elka. Mr. Renick, are you prepared to answer both those questions?
Yes, through you, Mayor. Generally, we identify these small streets on a case-by-case basis. Someone will bring it up to the department, that it's an unsafe scenario, or that it's confusing. In terms of what drivers are meant to do if there is no stop sign, the reason why we are trying to add stop signs and/or yield signs, if appropriate, in these conditions is that in the absence of any signage, these intersections are uncontrolled, which means the drivers are intended to give way to the driver approaching the intersection on their right. That would mean in a situation like this one, if you were driving north on Monterey, you're supposed to yield to the people who are on Woodlawn Court. But if you're driving south, you have the right of way. And I don't expect that a lot of drivers really know that particular intricacy of the Motor Vehicle Act, and tend to assume that Monterey traffic has priority over Woodlawn traffic. So this one particular stop sign and the five others that council is discussing tonight are addressing these kinds of situations where there's a potential ambiguity, and we feel that it can be made clearer and easier for everyone by adding a stop sign.
Thank you, Mr. Renick. Any other questions? All right.
I'll move the staff recommendation for traffic order number 2020-08.
Moving seconded, thank you. Any further discussion? Before I get to that, I'm just gonna double-check with Ms. Williams to see if anybody has called in on this item.
No callers, Your Worship.
All right, thank you very much. So back to this table, not seeing any other comments or questions. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Not opposed? Counselor Patterson, obviously absent. Can someone just bang on the door behind? Or I'll talk very loudly. Counselor, Counselor Patterson, if you can hear us? Maybe just knock on the door. I've called her in, thank you very much. As Counselor Patterson is seating, I will just take a, we'll just go over to item number 6.2, which is Amendments to Streets and Traffic Bylaw. Mr. Renick, I'm assuming that you're speaking to this item as well?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. This report pertains to the authority to make traffic control orders. Staff regularly brings routine traffic control orders to council for approval, such as the seven that we just discussed. The Streets and Traffic Bylaw gives some authority to staff to make orders, depending on the type of order, but other types of orders require council approval. Council generally relies on staff judgment and expertise on road safety matters, and generally council does not significantly debate the technical merits of the orders that staff brings forward. So if staff is directed to bring the amendments to the Streets and Traffic Bylaw per the recommendation, staff will be able to respond more quickly to routine matters, such as adding stop signs at uncontrolled intersections. Nothing in this report would take away council's authority to overturn a staff decision, and staff would still consult council on significant changes that would influence the community. And I also, at this time, I'd like to ask Dan Haran to briefly speak to this motion as well.
Thank you, Mr. Renick. Mr. Haran, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Your Worship. You can hear me okay?
We can. If you could speak just ever so slightly louder, that would be helpful.
I will speak louder, and, and I'll project, I'll project all the way across town into the council chambers there. You can hear me okay now, I'm assuming?
We can, thank you very much, Mr. Haran.
I just, thank you, Mr. Renick, actually summarized it quite nicely. I just wanted to add one just quick note to say, in summary of what we're trying to do here is, you know, we had originally tried to bring this back to council, or to the committee, anyway, back in March, and is one of those things that was deferred due to the COVID response and how busy we were. But in short, the, the, the requests, the traffic control orders that end up at committee or council for approval are always yeses. We're always asking for permission to say yes to something that we're recommending, that we do. So we consider this to be one of those times where, you know, that it would just cut some of that red tape and, and cut some of that extra process that we need to follow, and allow us to make changes more quickly that all have to do with recommendations that we're making that have a positive impact on safety. So that, that's why we're bringing this forward at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haran. Are there questions of, go ahead, Counselor Elka. And again, I'll remind people watching at home, if you have any comments, you're welcome to call in on this item. The phone number, again, is at the bottom of your screen, on the agenda, and on the Civic Web Portal. Go ahead, Counselor Elka, then Counselor Braithwaite, following.
Thank you so much, Chair. Through you to staff, I, I very much appreciate this attempt to streamline the process and, and speed things up and be more responsive to , to safety situations. However, what would the process be if, if staff put up a sign or put up a, a no-stopping, or, or made a whole area, like, for example, no, no stopping, and maybe beyond what some, the members of the public might think would be the safety need? What is the, the measure for appeal? Would, would we have to, I'd like to know what, what is the appeal process for something like this?
Thank you, Counselor Elka. You have to, I have to refresh my memory, no-stopping is one of the, the things on the, on the existing list. But, Mr. Renick or Mr. Haran, what is the, what is the process if something is seen to be changed and council wishes to, to raise it at council?
Your Worship, I'll, I'll jump in. Mr. Renick and I didn't necessarily coordinate how we were gonna try to remotely figure out who was gonna answer questions, so I'll do my best here. If I miss something, he can jump in. I, I think the process is very similar to what the process has already been for the, the aspects of the, of the Streets and Traffic Bylaw, where the authority has already been delegated. So what happens is, and, and it's not typically something along the lines of where we've gone out and made changes out in the world, real changes, and had them, the need to roll them back. It's usually has to do with things that the community, members of the community or residents want to see happen, where we say no. So people saying, I want a stop sign in this place, and, and, and... So people saying, I want a stop sign in this place and, and we say tech, from a technical and, or reasonable perspective, we don't want to do that and this is why. And so there is actually no change because what ends up happening from a governance perspective is the council will receive letters or feedback from the community saying, we tried to make the following change in terms of traffic and the Department of Engineering and Public Works, specifically the director or staff have said, no, we don't want that. And then it becomes not a straightforward traffic control order question. It now becomes a, more of a governance question that can be escalated to the council level. So at that point, I'd be required to, to write a report and bring it to the council to, for, or to the committee anyway, to have a discussion about it. So that would be things like, so when I anticipate those things happening though, are probably more controversial issues, which we would probably anticipate need a discussion at the council table anyway. I hope that answers the, the question.
And I'm sorry, Your Worship, if I can just quickly tack on there, the existing bylaw as written does say that the council may by resolution at any time rescind, revoke or vary any order made by the Director of Engineering Services. So there is an appeal mechanism and it is a council resolution.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead, Counsel Zelka.
That's very helpful. And I, I do have some, some neighbors in the North Oak Bay area questioning repeatedly why there's a, you know, children's play, play the 30 zone in, about midway up Henderson next to the adult school, where there really isn't a playground anymore, but the 30 zone is still there. So definitely, I've had to bring a, I guess, a motion or a notice of motion for something like that, I presume?
Interesting question to raise that as a piece of procedural piece. It can be raised, probably best just letters from the committee to count, or from the community to the Director of Engineering and that could, that would come as a report back to council. Thank you. And I think that stretch is being looked at, but we'll, we'll find out. Any other questions on any of these? Go ahead, Counsel Breathwaite. Sorry, I had you on my list.
That's okay, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just, you know, when I look at this list, I'm, I'm quite fine with everything except for when it comes to the limited parking because in the past, that's where we have had the most input from the public. And I'm, I'm wondering if that one is one that we should keep within our purview, although I, I'm glad to hear about the appeal mechanism that's built into the, into the bylaw. But I'm, I'm wondering what, what my fellow counselors, how my fellow counselors feel about that one, or if they feel that that appeal mechanism is, is good enough to include the time limited parking within the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Counsel Breathwaite. That is really a question for this body is here. Go ahead, Counsel Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor. And as a follow up to the, the comments just made by Counsel Breathwaite, what I, I do wonder, I, that was the one that concerned me also, one that, ones that would limit the use of, of the street in any way. And so, and what I'm wondering is if that is something where residents or businesses particularly would be, would receive notice of the, of our intent to do that or make that change prior to it actually being implemented so that it might be a proactive rather than a reactive response to it.
Thank you. And maybe I'll turn it into a question for staff. Is there, is there any consideration of a process where notification is given, particularly for some of the, the parking use changes?
Your Worship, I, I think this one is one of those, those situations, the two hour parking or the time limited parking where I think the, from the council perspective, you really are relying on the judgment of, of, well, of me and Mr. Renick in terms of deciding which is the stuff that needs input and which doesn't. So for example, if there's a stretch of the street in a, in a, a neighborhood away from commercial zones where there happens to be some kind of pressure from non-residential parking, the kinds of things that typically residents would normally ask in the past for residence only parking, you know, instead of having to come to the council to talk about resident only parking, we can put a measure in place, this is the time limited parking that allows us to, to shift where some of those parking pressures are without negatively impacting the residents who actually live on that street because they're exempt from those two hour parking rules. But if we were talking about trying to make some changes in and around, say, one of the villages or some of the commercial areas, that's not something that engineering, that I or my team would be willing to go make a change without having some community feedback. So there wouldn't be a willy nilly change without getting some input and probably bringing it to a forum like this one, Committee of the Whole to discuss, because it fits in with so much other give and take decisions that need to be made about, about a stretch of, of the district. So we're kind of giving the authority, but there is a level of trust there to, to senior staff to, to make the call on, well, is this something that needs a conversation at the community level or not?
Go ahead, Counsel Breathwaite.
Thank you, just a follow up on that, through you Chair, to, so what I think I heard staff say prior to that last answer was that there's always a mechanism in place that people can do the, send something into council, but making sure that they're aware that they can do that. So for example, if on Oak Bay Avenue, we were to make a change to the number of hours that you are allowed to park, say it's an hour now instead of two hours or 1.5 hours, then the businesses along that particular portion of the avenue would be given a notification that this change was coming and, and perhaps in that notification would be the steps that they could take to put forward some of their concerns if they had any.
Mr. Haran?
Yes, Your Worship, that's correct. And from a perspective of, you know, staff, we, we need to be very careful as we go forward with this kind of thing because if we don't consult properly and don't make sure that we've talked to the right people and made clear what we're trying to do, the, the mechanism is always there for those individuals, those folks to communicate with you as the council and say, hey, the engineering department has done something that doesn't make any sense here and, and certainly as in terms of staff leadership, we're sensitive to those issues. So we do really want to, from a staff perspective, anticipate what the concerns are and make sure that we're understanding what we're trying to do so that, at the same time though, we're really trying to make, to make it easier for us to do is when we know that it's a very straightforward decision to be made, that we can make a change that will have a positive impact that the, that a certain stretch of the community really wants to see, that we can make it happen relatively quickly without, without having to come to a council meeting. So there's a little bit of flexibility that's being added without taking away from our responsibility to, to, to consult properly when we're, when we're trying to make decisions about parking issues and transportation safety.
Thank you, Mr. Haran. Go ahead, Counsel Green.
I'm prepared to make a motion if, if, if you would like, and then I just have a few comments.
Just as, as committee and just wanting to seek public input before we get to motions, I think I'd, I'll hold off on the motions until, see if there's any other questions. Go ahead, Counsel Appleton.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you to staff, just a very quick question, that covered under the, the powers of municipal council versus staff in the current bylaw, under parking, the Director of Engineering Services currently has the authority to establish an area of no parking. Does that extend to the temporary or permanent removal of parking of an area on a street which would otherwise be parking?
Mr. Haran?
Yes, Your Worship, thank you for the question, Counsel Appleton. The way that, that's a good question and, and as I think about it right now, you know, any changes we made to parking, at least recently, have been directly under the, kind of the pandemic response, EOC kind of authority. Any more permanent parking questions than no parking? I can't think of any time that we've done that in recently. So that's one that even though it's been delegated to my level, my initial reaction is I probably wouldn't be removing parking without having a serious consultation, you know, not having at least some consultation locally with what we're trying to do. I can't think of an example of where that's occurred recently, but it's definitely one that for a number of, for a number of years now, the, there's been a relaxation in terms of the delegation of authority, but staff have not gone ahead and removed parking without properly consulting with the folks that are impacted. So it is an example of how this can be successful in terms of delegating some of these authorities to, to staff.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't see any other questions, any calls in from the public on this, Ms. Williams?
No, Your Worship, no calls.
Okay. So back to this table, if there's, I'm happy to take a motion or questions or comments at this time. Go ahead, Counsel Green.
I'm prepared to make a motion and then, and then just a few comments, and I will move the staff recommendation.
Thank you, moved and seconded. Just want to make sure I'm clear because in the report, it lists the additions, but it also says, suggests changing the municipal hall parking lot to a special speeds zone of 20 kilometers an hour, is that included in your?
Yes.
Motion as well? Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure we're clear about the mover and seconder are on. Go ahead, Counsel Green.
Just briefly, I appreciate the fact that we, we are able to make these delegations of authority on parking. Parking is, in my experience, has always been a fairly contentious or can be potentially a fairly contentious issue. So if it can be worked out at the ground level, so to speak, I think that's helpful. And I, I actually have faith and trust in staff to make those, those calls as needed and as it's indicated for any revocation, change or amendment, that will come back to us. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the model. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Green. Any other discussion on this? Go ahead, Counsel Zelka.
Thank you, Chair. I understand we have a process going right now with Sanich and possibly Victoria with respect to coming up with a standard speed limit for the entire district. The ministry is allowing us to do that. How will that project be impacted by this change? If any.
Thank you, Counsel Zelka. Mr. Haran, if that pilot project is approved by the province, would that be captured in this at all or is that just a separate piece?
Thank you for the question, Your Worship. I don't have a full, great answer to how this change, so we're not recommending any changes in terms of delegation of authority for speed limits. I will say though, that the, you know, the council has back in 2016 already given broad direction about how to make decisions on speed limits. So, and we're still following that direction. So a, a great example is there are many situations where residents want to see speed limits raised or lowered in certain places and we say, the council has already considered these and this is the criteria we use to decide if a speed limit's appropriate. And often that's enough to explain why a speed limit is good, is good as it is, or maybe it does need to be changed. The pilot project that we're working with Sanich and some of the other regional areas is a way to make it easier to implement the changes the council already made, decisions made back in 2016. There's a difference between policy wise saying, we'd like to see 40 kilometers as a generally the standard speed limit for most streets in Oak Bay and actually being able to implement it, which we didn't know and fully understand back in 2016. So the ability for this pilot project is to allow us to find a way to do blanket speed limits that allows us to actually change the speed limits on, in a big way in Oak Bay and then be able to enforce those new speeds without having hundreds and hundreds of signs posted all throughout the district. So this pilot project, in summary, is a way for us to really efficiently implement the changes that were made by the council back in 2016 related to speed limits in Oak Bay.
Thank you.
And sorry, if I may just jump in very quickly on that one, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Renick.
Speed limits cannot be changed by orders of council. They actually have to be changed in the bylaw itself, which is why the staff recommendation for the changes to the bylaw includes the municipal hall speed limit. They need to be spelled out in the bylaw or else they can't be enforced by Oak Bay Police.
Very good. Thanks for that clarification, Mr. Renick. Any other discussion on this? I can certainly see, I was reading through it and I highlighted, you know, what no left turns, no right turns, those are ones I could certainly see being controversial at times as well. However, listening to the conversation and the discussion with our staff, I think there's a fair bit of comfort there. If they can, what's, what's the one on here that caught my eye? If we can let them determine if we're going to install laved highways in Oak Bay, then I think we can probably stand that, can take the responsibility of this as well. So yeah, I, I think this has been an interesting conversation because it's always a fine line between trying to make things efficient, make things responsive to the community and try to make these kind of engineering decisions non-political. So we'll, we'll take this, this recommendation, see if how the vote goes, but I'd be supportive of the, of the motion as it stands. Any other discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor? Any opposed, none opposed? Thank you very much. And thanks for the work to Mr. Renick and Mr. Haran for bringing that forward. If we had this earlier, we would have not had the earlier agenda item on this, so no recusals necessary. Next up, we just have a public comment and question period. And again, if anybody from the public wishes to speak to council on any matter related to Oak Bay, you're welcome to do so. Under this bylaw, we have a maximum of 30 minutes available to the public, up to three minutes per speaker. And it can, you're just welcome to call in to the numbers available, again, on the streaming screen or through the, they're posted on the agenda package or on the, on the website as well. Go ahead, Counsel Zelka.
Thank you, Chair. On a point of procedure, if I may, this is, this agenda I'm sure is under the new, the new procedures by law. Why do we have public comment at item seven and not say at item one or two where it used to be? I'm just wondering why has it been buried sort of towards the end of the meeting? Please.
Thank you for that, Counsel Zelka. I believe the intention there was to allow for comments that need public comment on those items and then a generalized comments if there's things that people wish to raise separately was how it was put, the discussion we had at the, at the committee table back in the day, but it's been a long time since we changed this, so I'm hesitant to ask Ms. Williams because she wasn't here for that conversation as to the why, but that was my recollection and Ms. Vrella, perhaps you can jump in on that one as well?
Certainly, Your Worship. So it was an attempt to provide an expanded opportunity for the public to weigh in, whether it was an agenda specific item or if there was just general conversation people wanted to have at the end of the meeting after they had heard deliberation.
So I think we'll try this and if we, if we feel like there's a different order that's, that's beneficial, we can do, we can try that as well. I think the other thing that just occurred, remembered, reminded me was that the earlier agenda items are often things that we will have delegations or other aspects invited to, so we typically try and put those at the, at the front of the agenda package.